Okay, we'll get rolling. Do you hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, uh, June twenty-sixth.
Second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of minutes of six, twelve, twenty-three.
I did notice one typo under Rotten Regional Planning Commission. So, fix that.
Right? Fix the typos.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Road report.
Can I just ask quickly, is it common on Zoom that, like, when we put down numbers that we don't know who, who it is on Zoom? We just know it's a.
It depends on how you log in, I guess. I mean, someone said iPhone six, someone said Samsung Galaxy.
I just wondered when I was reading.
Darren's iPad.
Okay, let's have a road report.
Oh, we finished up Bird's Eye Road. That's all done. We got a few compliments on that. They're not really good for all the rain that we got right in the middle of redoing an entire road, so we're pretty happy with that. We did a couple culverts up there as well. We had a, the beavers plugged one of the culverts on Saltesse sort of pond over by York Street Extension, so we had to open that up. Deep, this deep, um, drive down in there with the excavator. And then while we were there, um, that spot really builds up ice in a couple places by Saltesse Farm. In the wintertime, the salt water runs right out from the farm area into the road and everything, so. Since we had all the equipment there, we decided to just go ahead and do a quick swale ditch. Um, and get that problem resolved, so we ditched from that. From where the water is down toward York Street Extension up to Evergreen Road, and then we skipped up over Mario and everything, and then we did a little bit of ditching up there by Saltesse Farm. And we're hoping that that'll resolve some of the ice and water and roadway issues for winter. And we also put in a catch basin for right on the corner of Blissville and Saltesse Road while we were there. Because people like to cut that corner real sharp and crunch that culvert down and everything, so. We just, we knocked out a few things while we were in the area. They graded Morse Hollow and we added some material to that road as well. Um, we cut down a few trees on Morse Hollow that have been wall hanging for quite a while to make it hard for travel with a larger vehicle. We placed a culvert down towards the bottom of Morse Hollow right where that gravel shortly after it turns, the road turns from asphalt to gravel. Did a dry wood culvert there so they can get into the field and push hog it. And, um, then we went up to Lakeview and cleaned up about five, ten years' worth of mess. Um, you know, we just needed some, a little bit of attention.
What do you mean mess?
Like it's the turnaround spot that, because it's such a tight area and there's not a lot of options of what to do with the snow or anything. Um, it just kind of gets pushed into somebody's yard, basically. And it was to the point where it was an entire tandem load of stuff, so. Uh, it's not a common practice to go around and clean up, you know, winter's winter. You have property you gotta deal with that we, you know, we get that, but, um, this is, it's a, it's a challenging area, so.
Is it still parked up in the?
No, it's up across from the golf course, Lakeview, Lakeview, Ridgefield North, Ridgefield South.
There's a brand new house there that they just built about, oh, five, seven years ago. President of the homeowners.
The homeowner had contacted me and I went up and looked at it and decided that it was, it was out of the ordinary amount of. You know, winter, winter damage that you get, so, you know, we, we did what we thought was the right thing to do with that and we cleaned it up and we're appreciative. Now we're kind of in between jobs, so we've been doing some small fill-in things that, you know, signs, cuts, brush in some places and. We're waiting to get into some MRGP work, so. Good. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns.
Anybody have any questions?
That's something we have to wait for the state for, find out what's, what we need to do or get for grant monies?
No, we, we have grant money. Joel and I are gonna meet tomorrow and identify a project, then we gotta tell the state, this is a project we've identified. And then they gotta approve it before we can do any work.
Okay, good.
It's mostly ditching and stuff.
It's, um, ditching, um, repairs to culverts. Uh, we have a whole inventory that we work on from that the Rotten Regional Planning Commission uh, and the state put together, identified all the sections of our roads that do not meet these standards. Uh, hydrologically connected sections of roads that don't meet standards, and we have a certain amount that we have to do every year, and there's certain percentages that you have to do.
And then they come back and say, good job.
No, we, we, it's a self-reporting, um, so we report to them every year, uh, what we've done and brought into compliance, so. I've stated before that they, RRPC has helped us, used to help us. Um, the state used to fund the RRPC to help us, but they took that funding away. So it's based on the municipalities to do it.
Anybody have any other questions for Joel?
Thanks, Joel. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you don't mind, you can go have some dinner.
Go have some dinner and go play with the kids.
All right, thank you. Have a great evening.
Have a good night. Onto the town managers report.
So I have the form here, you remember from our last meeting that the state gave the alternatives. Um, presentation on the South Street Bridge. Um, and we have the, we have this form that we've gotta sign, assuming that SLUT board is on board with what the recommendation was. Um. Couple highlights I'll point out that as part of it. Um, because it's a, because, as you maybe remember from the last meeting, because it's a historic bridge. Preservation easement, basically there's one alternative, um, that they recommend, and that will result in a zero percent share. For all participating costs, including preliminary engineering right of way and construction. Uh. Um, the town would be responsible for one hundred percent of non-participating costs. Those would be things that the state doesn't say we need or recommend we need, for instance. Um. Let's say you wanted to put a sidewalk on both sides of the bridge. Um, that would be at the town's cost. And, um. We would be responsible for mitigation of, of any environmental contamination within the town right of way that is in existence prior to the start of the construction. Uh, they go on to say that, um. They reiterated that provided that all the permits and rights of way are in place, they could put the temporary bridge in sooner if they have to. The construction year is projected to start, um, beginning in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five, would last two full construction seasons. It is possible this can move out a year due to budgets right of way in permitting or utility relocations. Uh, so there's this form, if someone wants to make a motion or if you wanna have additional discussions about it.
Any discussions on it by the board?
Considering that there's zero payment at the police pocket. And when was that form signed, the restoration form?
Two thousand and one, I think it was.
Two.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be the best venue.
Okay.
Yeah. You're young business, you know. I, I was gonna ask the engineer how much extra this could cost doing it like this compared to a brand new bridge.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't ask.
I saw a number, um. I saw a number, I think it was higher than like.
What?
The East Polton Bridge, I think.
Oh yeah, the East Polton Bridge is about four million. This is seven point five.
Yeah.
So. You know that. They wanna do it?
So we need a motion to, to accept.
Yes, I would, I would make a motion to accept the state's recommendation, the Route thirty-one bridge, to do it as planned.
Right, a second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
All right. Are you guys, you guys opposed on the bottom here?
Yep. Motion carried.
It's nice that if the bridge goes longer, they think that the temporary bridge would last. You know, we say that last meeting, which is good.
I'm sorry?
If something happens, it takes longer than they think, the temporary bridge would be, would last a couple of years, you said? That's what the, what's it?
Two years, two years.
What do we, what temporary bridge?
That they're gonna do.
That they're gonna do. They're saying if something happens, they're delaying, the temporary bridge will stay there, it won't be.
Dismantled.
Right.
Wait. That the only bridge that we own is in that.
I think that's in the historic regulation easement. Yeah, I think so. He said there was only a handful throughout San Juan that actually is being in the program.
And only gonna be using the very top controls.
Right.
That's what you're gonna bring this.
Yeah, right.
That's that. All right, the MRGP Grants and Aid Project.
Okay, we sort of just touched on that when Joel was here, unless you have other questions about it. Very fascinating program.
It's great, yeah.
Um, it's, it's interesting, um, the, the. The program is a little quirky in that you can look at the map and you can see what. It identifies different segments and it color codes them versus in compliance. Uh, slightly out of compliance, more out of compliance, and really, really bad. Um. And then you can click on each segment and it kind of tells you, but then you have to go into another program to, and type in the segment you're talking about in order to see what was out of compliance. And some of the notes don't even say what are out of compliance, so it's sort of a, um, it's kind of a quirky program that we're gonna have to get accustomed to using.
Do they come and look often, or is it just basically on whatever you show them?
So initially, the state, the state looks at some map on some desktop. And, um. Basically, these sections of roads that we're talking about are all considered hydrologically connected, so they go, they go into some water somewhere. Um, so the state looks at it and says, okay, here's, here's, here are the sections that we think are connected to water. And then the RR, and then the RRPC went around on all our roads and did an inventory of, oh, this section is hydrologically connected. And it's out of compliance because of either rutting or, or if, if, um, if it's, uh, scoring, if the ditches are scoring. Um, or if there's erosion, or if there's a apparently failed culvert. Uh, and then they make a note of it and then input all that into the, into the state's system. And then the state had, has a list, you have to have so many fifteen percent done by this year. And then you gotta do another five percent by this year. Um, and they, they start with the, uh, non-class four roads, and then there's, there's, um. There's several, uh, I think it's by two thousand and twenty-eight, like there's several sections on Ames Hollow, for example, that we have to repair by two thousand and twenty-eight.
How far into Ames Hollow?
Well, I mean, Ames Hollow goes up to the Kennedy Landing. Yeah, and then it's, then it's a, a trail after that, but.
That's the one we changed.
Right, right, we changed. But that's gonna be, that road in particular, I think is gonna be interesting and challenging, probably.
I should start from the top and work our way down.
There's a lot of, lot of ledge and stuff like that.
And how much money do they, is it a match process? Is it, they, if you do it by X amount, it, it's paid through a grant?
Well, currently, um, it's interesting how it works because uh, you may recall, the board will sign the letter of intent to participate in grants and aid. And as long as you file that letter. I don't know the formula, um, but they, they, they come back and say, here's a grant, you're gonna get a grant. Um, this year, uh, I think it's thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, and it's, um, it's a match, but it's, it's. They, they, um, you know, how many guys are working on it? How many hours did you have the excavator there? How many trucks? What trucks did you use? What materials did you buy? How much did you pay for the materials?
Periodize every move.
Yeah, so it's, um.
They pay for it, it's, it's nice.
Well, it's match.
It's match.
Right.
Well, I mean, we always match because of our, our labor and stuff, I mean. But, yeah.
So where is the current project headed now, this year?
Well, we have to sit down, Joel and I and Sarah are gonna sit down tomorrow and identify, um, a project, like there's still some stuff on Pond Hill that, that hadn't been done. We did a bunch of, we did like three segments, four segments on Pond Hill last year. Um, and there's like two or three on the other side of the, of the ranch that we didn't do. Um. There's a bunch of stuff on Lockins that they wanna do, but I don't know, I gotta, I gotta talk with them, RRPC about that one, because given that that section is a class four, I'm not sure if we can do those yet. So. We haven't, we haven't pinpointed which, I don't know, what I'm gonna do.
But they do give us deadlines, like for Ames Hollow, they give you deadline that you have up until.
Yeah, not, uh, what the class, the class four roads, I think, is two thousand and twenty-eight. You have to do, you have to repair those segments by, which is coming up fast. But we've been, we've been, I mean, even some of our work that, that they've been doing recently. Um, you know, some of this routine work that, um.
Some of the ditches and stuff, yeah.
So.
Come October, we gotta remember to be a little proactive and start thinking about budgeting. Budgeting for a match for these types of grants. Be a little proactive.
Um. I just got a note here reminding everyone that July first is the fireworks. Uh, and July fourth is a parade. The rain date is July second. Um. For the fireworks. Um. For some reason, I think I had said the eighth before. I did say that before. But I remember we had a discussion where, I think, even some people in the crowd were like, once Fourth of July is over, we really don't wanna.
Yeah, right.
Participate, so.
It's a pretty good, pretty good point.
Yeah.
They made two notes.
Um.
Let's hope it doesn't rain.
Well, I think the lake is doing it first, Joe.
Yeah, they are. Yep, yeah. Um, yeah, I wondered out loud if it rains, if it rains hard both of those days, what do we do then?
Um, you can't save fireworks, right?
Yeah, you can.
Hello?
Keep it dry. You, you never heard of these words? To keep your beverage dry?
No.
What is next?
I don't know.
That's the same. So, yeah.
So I've got a note here, um, I know there's been some grassroots activities around the major topic of last, um, our last SLUT board meeting. And you know that there was a meeting, um. Last Wednesday, another community meeting that I, that a lot of folks from Fairhaven kind of orchestrated, Ben Worthing, the principal. I understand the superintendent was there, um.
Superintendent of, of Fairhaven, Slate Valley.
Um, assistant principal, I think, was there, you were there, weren't you, John?
Yeah. Ben was there, he's the principal of Fairhaven High School, the principal of Fairhaven Elementary was there. Um, the superintendent from Slate Valley was there. Mr. Humphreys and Dale couldn't make it because of what was going on in Fairhaven. So we had a lot of teachers and retired teachers there. And it was an excellent meeting. We started, that was step one. And there's a lot to talk about, a lot to talk about. The big thing that came out of that meeting, I think, was kids nowadays didn't grow up like we did, because a lot has proven that. A lot of kids aren't into athletics right now. They aren't going out for athletics. They, they're into more of their, you know, gaming and AI stuff. So what can we do for that? So you gotta kind of brainstorm to get the kids interested. But also being interested in the community. We have a lot that we're talking about. There's another meeting. I'm hoping that the superintendent, and Joel was there too, Joe, uh, principal of Polton. I'm hoping the superintendent, uh, from our school district comes. And I'm hoping that Dale and, and, you know, Humphreys and some other people will make it. It's a good start to the program. And we've discussed a lot, there's, there's a lot of ideas, but, yeah, we gotta, it's, it's a start. It's, it was a very positive start.
Did they set another meeting date?
Yes, oh, yeah. The other meeting date, uh, we're gonna meet again down at the college, cause Danny gave us a conference room down there. Uh, July eighteenth at four o'clock. That's the next one down there. It's very positive. They really, it's, there's a lot of good ideas, opened my eyes quite a bit. I, I.
Are these meetings open to the public?
Well, I, I would, you know, Ben's running it, but I would say yes. Because it's a workshop, mind you. It's not gonna be a complaint. It's not for complaining about problems. It's trying to figure out what direction. Not just Polton, but all the communities, surrounding communities can go in, because we have problems in every town around. So it's, it's really a very positive thing. Yeah, I, I would think, I would think that it came down. I think everybody has some good ideas. It doesn't hurt to listen. Okay?
Yes. Um, I'm sorry, what, what, in the GMC campus?
Oh, it's, it's a, uh, where's it, with me, huh?
The conference.
The conference room in With Me Hall.
I think it's Withy, right?
Withy?
Withy Hall.
Very positive. It's a lot of good discussion. Okay?
So I've just got a note here, um. The Vermont Council on Rural Development, uh, the, the thing that Kim wrote down. At our last meeting, um, she's hoping, uh, to start the workshops towards the end of August in this year. Um, I just, I reached out to her today to kind of just put a bugger here, then we, we still wanna, um, take advantage of that offer, so. Um, she's thinking end of August, but stay tuned for that.
She mentioned an email the last time, did you, did we happen to have that email?
Oh, yes, I can give it to you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
That's fine.
She asked, she actually texted it to me after the meeting. Kim at V K rural dot org.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's just K I M.
K I M, correct. You're welcome. Um, I have under transaction other buff, I say, Betsy Wesker has a, uh, events, uh, application. Um, for, in a, an event, a dinner event at Green Mountain College on July fourth. Um. So.
A motion to approve it?
Yeah, so it's a one, it's a one-off, or excuse me, one, one-time special events liquor license permit or alcohol permit and if it's necessary, liquor.
Okay, I have a, a motion to approve that?
Just call the liquor license.
Mm-hmm.
Approve that one time with your license.
I'm second to that.
A second. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Um, I have a note, our next meeting, regular meeting would be July tenth, but I'm not gonna be here. I don't know if folks wanna have a different date or.
May we roll seventeen? You're on vacation? Roll seventeen, is that okay with everybody?
So that's at seventeen?
Yeah, the following Monday.
The following Monday.
So a back-to-back, two Mondays in a row, seventeen to twenty-four. That okay, Alan?
All right.
Motion to, uh, move the, uh, regular meeting from July tenth to July seventeenth? For our next regular meeting?
Sure.
Make a motion to switch the meeting from the tenth and seventeenth, cause Paul's on vacation.
I have a second to that.
All in favor? Okay, motion carried. Sarah have anything, if you want to add tonight?
Sarah, are you, are you with us?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Sarah, you have anything you wish to add for tonight's meeting?
Um, well, I have a report for the RRPC, um. Yeah, I've got a lot. I don't actually know where to start if, uh. For tonight's meeting, I guess the one thing, um, that I would want the SLUT board to know, um. Well, we had the Towns Trails Meeting on, uh, July sixteenth at the high school, and I saw many people there, so thank you for coming. It was, it was a really good meeting. Uh, I've received a lot of positive feedback, um, about, um, the groups that were there. There was a lot of, um, community groups, nonprofits and organizations. Um, and we had some good conversations, so, um, we will be continuing on with that project. I believe the next steering committee meeting is next. And, um, there will be, uh, a draft of the final plan sometime within the next month or so from the consultants. Um, there are some grants that are opening that I'm keeping an eye on, uh, Buildings and General Services announced a whole bunch of grants that they have. Uh, the deadline, I think, is September for some of those grants, so I'll be coming back to Paul and the SLUT board with, um. With some potential grant applications there. I do know that Chamber and Economic Development of the Rotten Region is writing a grant application for a Poltony business for economic development, so. That's good news. We're really happy to have their help. Um, PDRC is putting together a tax credit application that is due July first, and I've been helping with that a little bit. Um, had a few meetings with folks around housing, um, housing, opportunities for housing development, um. Infield development or making use of underutilized buildings in Poltony in recent weeks, um, so I'm following up on that. And then the other big grant is, uh, MERP, uh, Municipal Energy Resilience Program, uh, which will be opening soon. It was supposed to open in May. Um, but it hasn't, it hasn't opened quite yet, so, uh, the RPC is asking us to prioritize which building, uh, the town would like to uh, investigate the energy resilience of for that grant. We had originally submitted the town office and, um, the senior center and Stonebridge. Um, so not expecting a, uh, any feedback tonight, but I will, within the next few weeks, probably be, be talking more about that for grant application. Um, and which, which building we need to prioritize for that. There is a mini-grant, um, that's open with that. It's four thousand dollars where you can use mini-grant to, um, for a lot of different things in the community to basically educate the community around energy resiliency, and it's possible. And it's possible we could use a mini-grant to do some investigation of the building that exists at the town garage. So that's another thing that we're kind of kicking around. And I think that's it in terms of community development.
How's the fireworks? How's the Fourth of July going, Sarah?
It's going good. I think we've got everything in order. Fingers crossed. Thankfully, this is a pretty well-oiled machine, actually. So Cheryl's been helping quite a bit. And we've got five or six vendors coming to the fireworks, and grounds are opening at 3:00 PM on Saturday. Similar to previous years, but we do have some new entries. Girl Scouts are coming from Western New York, or Washington County in New York and Shaws. For the Fourth of July, I think we've heard from 23 different groups for floats so far. And the Chamber's been doing a lot to help me organize that as well. So I think it's going pretty well. Hope it doesn't rain.
Yeah, no rain, no rain.
Anybody have anything else they want to ask Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, what do you got?
Hi, Sarah. It's Cheryl. In regards to the Fourth of July, the Chamber says there's activities after the parade at the Bonca Campus, but we haven't seen anything else about it, and we've had a lot of phone calls. Do you not be still planning on doing something down there? And if you is, what type of events?
Yes, so they are planning to do Energize on the campus, as they've done the past couple of years, immediately following the parade. There are a couple of food vendors, and then the Green Mountain Community School is also doing a fundraiser. They have like a lemonade hot dog stand. So it's pretty small in terms of, you know, what will be on campus, but it's similar to previous years. I did do some advertising at the end of last week with the Herald and Lakes Region Free Press and Lakeside News, so that should be in the newspapers soon. And I do need to do some updates on the, you know, social media and Front Porch Forum and that kind of thing. But that's the plan for the campus.
Thank you. We didn't do a lot with the campus last year, though. Just so you know, we did it the first year Jonas was involved in it, and then things went astray, so we kind of took ourselves out of the campus stuff, and they kind of did their own thing. We weren't a part of it, so we weren't associated with it. We can put down that they're having things, but we weren't a part of being involved in it. We can let you know we're not a part of some of that thing. So that's how that happened.
I still got you on. You got a couple of questions. Where do we stand with the Tressel project?
I talked to the engineer. He's just finalizing the request for proposals so that we can send it out to bed.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, I talked to him end of last week.
Good. And what about our tax stabilization? Are we going to be setting up another meeting for that?
Yeah, if the board gives me the direction to do that, yeah.
Right. We'll have to discuss that. Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Sarah?
Sarah, there was a flyer. Did the flyer go out already? The flyer that you sent us to look at?
I'm sorry, which flyer was that?
One that had the July 4th and July 1st on it with the fireworks set up?
Oh, yeah, so the poster that was made, that did go out. There was a poster and a press release that went out to media.
Okay. People asked me, but I wasn't sure. Where should I direct them to see that?
So it will be in the newspapers. I can update the town's social media. We probably should print a few posters and hang them up around town, which we haven't done.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. I'll help you because I know people are looking for it, and I had a couple of calls saying, is your poster? I said, I know there's one out there, but I wasn't sure. So, yeah, if I can pick up something, I'll help you put them around.
Okay, I can do that tomorrow when I'm.
That would be good.
Also, Linden and Londonville have just merged. Be interesting to see how they went about it.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just merged.
I'll do some digging.
Does anybody want any more workload?
Are we, is the RPC the next agenda item? Because I can give you a quick update on that, too, if you'd like.
It can be. Go ahead.
Okay, so I attended the regional commissioners' meeting last week, and the purpose of the meeting was primarily to cover the fiscal year '24 budget and work plan. It passed unanimously. There wasn't really a whole lot to share there, but looks like an exciting upcoming year there. There's a lot of transportation projects. And the TAC is meeting this week. There will be a presentation on micro-transit that I'll be attending. So happy to take any questions, if anybody has them, to bring to the Transportation Alternatives Committee. And that's it.
What is a micro-transit?
I'll tell you after Thursday. I understand it to be a way for rural communities to make use of public transportation more readily. So it's sort of on-demand system for bus or other kind of on-call transportation alternatives.
Okay. Thank you. That's about it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. And that's it, Paul?
There's a couple personnel matters that go in executive session for. It occurred to me, we got an estimate for the fixing the steps of the transportation.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Are the railings around the things in there?
We did receive an estimate for railing from one vendor. It's not here. I was gonna look for another. I was gonna seek another estimate on that.
Okay.
Right. For the ramp thing.
Right. Half the way. It's half stairs, half rail.
Right. With hinges on it.
Also picked up when it's flowing?
Yeah.
And just right now?
Smith Construction, you need a motion? What's everybody thinking about it?
Just the only people we got?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd like to meet with them because it's, in my opinion, it's a little bit.
Meet with them, and then we'll bring it back for our next meeting.
Yeah.
So definitely not, do we have one there?
No.
No, that's just a step. Right. Then we'll bring it to our next meeting. Okay. All right, Paul?
Jeff, we do have one question. I'm sure that's a bridge. Has anything been decided what they want to do?
Well, the Tressel Bridge?
Yeah.
I guess it's up to the state to figure out how they're gonna do that.
Jeff just asked me that. That's the project that the engineer is putting together, the request for proposals to what have been out. And the grant we received was strictly a study to see if there's any alternatives as far as.
That grant was for $60,000?
$60,000, yep, to study.
So we're in phase one of that, right?
So they're gonna look at maybe straightening the river out there?
Don't know. There could be all kinds of things. That's gonna be the study. The engineers have gone and studied. We attest on it a week from Tuesday. It's gonna take a little bit of time because that study is, probably will be. But at least it's starting. Okay?
Yeah, and as I said, I do have some personnel matters.
Public comments and concerns?
Quick question. What's status of the highway garage studies?
Well, right now, we're just kind of.
So there is an engineer that I was working with that had some, he was out of the office for some time. He had some issues. He's back in play now, so he and I have been playing phone tag because he was gonna give me some ideas. He's done several projects, highway garage projects. And I know the crew, I don't even know if they've ever gone to any of these newer highway garages just to kind of get some ideas.
Which is another thing we better trip for, but I know I had some pictures of it.
So that's kind of the short answer?
We have to have a study and something from Sarah before we know if we can have a building there. That was our big question, too. Can we have a building where it exists? Or do we need a different place? Because it's gonna have to be bigger or else shaped or. Is that what we're still waiting to do?
Well, I did engage an engineer to look at it and give us his opinion as far as. And I think we've discussed this before, that you can't go any closer to the river. If you're in the location you're in now, you can't go any closer to the river than we already are. I think now with that knowledge and now that the engineering firm is back engaged with us, he can give us some ideas of, do we even have enough room to do what we want to do down there? Because, I mean, the feeling is, you know, a lot of the equipment that's housed outside now really should be inside and undercover. So I don't know. I mean.
Most of the new ones I looked at have five big bays.
Or ten.
Yeah. And the big ones with the bays, and some have just the newer ones. That's why I'm wondering, like, I don't know how we.
You want a bay for every single piece of equipment?
I've heard about it, too, is build it. They have two spots for future equipment, too. I think all of it, everything I've done on it, it's built for the size of the equipment you have now.
What makes sense? If you spend $200,000 on a truck, that you keep it in, so it's.
Even greater goes undercover. UV rays hurts your tires.
I know. We look down and we measure the sand and the new shed down there, too.
Yeah, we've measured a lot of stuff down there. We have a good idea to start. But now that the engineer's back involved, we'll get that going.
And Sarah was gonna check on grants for that, too, I think, for building. And, right, Sarah, something to do with building and uses for, she's still there, town garage?
Yes, so I think what I would start with, there were some preliminary studies sent to me by the Natural Resources Conservation District. And I think, yeah, I think in terms of grants, that's probably where you would want to start, is to assessing the site because those grants would be easier to get than any grants for construction. So, yeah.
Grants for assessing the site?
Assessing the site and the surrounding area. So the river, you know, the transportation, the way that it's accessed, but really the site and how close it is to the river, I think, is probably the route to go in terms of assessing whether, what you should do on the property.
What if we can't do anything on it because it's too small a property? Would they help with getting a new piece of property or no, or building on?
Well, I think that what they would do is be able to make some recommendations about next steps. Yeah, until you get in there and look at the soils a little bit and the slopes and the river corridor, they probably, we don't know a whole lot more. That's the next step from my perspective.
Yeah, that's almost started. Assessment of the site, we'll go from there. One step at a time. Okay?
Yeah, Sarah brought up a good point. And to Cheryl, if there's an issue at that site, we might be limited as to what you can do there. So there might be, you know, it's just an idea. You might have two sites.
That might be a possibility.
Okay.
Because door's not closed on it.
Yeah, so I don't think it's neither or. It's like it could be two different places.
We'll find out through the engineering assessment. Yes, that door was definitely would be closed.
My next question. What's the status of the town website improvements?
We have to. The current company that services our website, we are up for renewal in December. And there's a significant increase in costs that I'm working with a consultant to figure out a different platform or a different company to deal with. So in the next few months, we're probably gonna be going to another website. I don't even know what they're called. What are they called? Above my knowledge.
Webmaster, I think it's.
Webmaster? Okay. We're probably gonna be going to a different company. So that's where we are with that.
And this is a, kind of like an extension of what happened during the June 12th meeting, is our constable made it clear that because he works full-time plus in Fairhaven, he's very seldom in town. And I was wondering if the select board will be looking to maybe get someone who would be available. And I'm not really even sure what the constable has the powers to do in town. So if you can maybe explain that. But it doesn't seem like he's able to be here when there's assistance needed. Just sorry to throw it out there. I like the guy, but.
Without saying too much, one of the reasons why we're going in executive session for personnel matters.
Seems to be a pretty big conversation on Facebook, too, is wanting to see more of a police presence, so seems like a timely discussion to be had.
And so I'll be in disgust, too, also in the other meetings. All ideas. It's something that's not being swept under the rug. We're looking at everything, just so you know. And there's, there's a lot. Okay. Anything else, Patty?
Question. For a small town, we're pretty busy. We have the Young at Heart, we have United Way, we have the Community League, the rec program, a ton of stuff going on that are not voted positions, such as the school board, select board, whatever. How does someone know about getting on one of these committees? My assumption is each board should be five members. Could be 1,000% wrong. I don't know. But how would you go about becoming involved in some of these smaller organizations?
I'd first find out who's running the organization, who's heading it up, and ask them what their protocol is. Because a lot of things, I don't think, I don't know if it's a state mandate like the rec department has to have five board members. I don't know, Patty, if that's a state law. Or like the rescue squad. You're an LLC corporation, but I don't know how many people legally have to be on that board. Those are good questions. Good to find out. But I would first go to the person or find out the rotary or if anybody can help you find out who is heading up that program. I'd start there and talk to them.
I just think the checks and balances needs to be placed regardless.
Of, of, it's checks and balances. It's one thing I do believe in, too, Patty.
I was just curious how you go about finding out what the guidelines are.
Okay. Are you looking at any entity in particular? I would say I would start, if I was gonna, if I wanted to be involved, I would. I would like, I'd say, hey, I didn't know Cheryl, and I wanted to be involved in the rec department. I'd say, what's the involvement? I mean, I asked for the senior center. What's the involvement down there? As I live right across the road, so I ended up getting on the senior center board. And there's more than. And there's one more than five on that one. But I I would find out first who's running it, Patty, instead of.
I just think it's good practice, and I think we can get some more younger people involved.
Be great to get more younger people, yes.
Our benefits.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Alex?
Um I like the optimism that you're expressing about those community meetings. It sounds like things are moving along nicely, but I think it's important still to note that I made some pretty serious allegations um last time, and uh you know, they were pretty much corroborated by Sheriff Fox about the lack of data or lack of evidence of any of the crimes that were being suggested. And kind of alongside at the same time, I was helping um the one of the families in question uh file hazing harassment and uh bullying violations against the school, and they did get those back. And they don't tell you specifically which of the things were substantiated, but they did find that there were um and most of the allegations made were um cases of racial harassment, so uh you know, if these are, this is something that's happening, and I think that um, you know, we have the opportunity to really take the lead on it and really show that we are not going to let this be the kind of town where people feel free to live because of what um they look like, what the color of their skin is. And um at that meeting, um at the West Lake Board meeting, Mia Schultz came, and she mentioned potentially, Mia Schultz is the president of the N W A C P, we're often, and she mentioned potentially um having the opportunity to have like a hate-free forum or something through the Attorney General's Office, and um I happened to run into her and Paul at the uh V C R D meeting the next night, and we harassed him about that. So I'm just curious really about what the town's thought is for that. I mean, I would imagine that, I don't think that it would necessarily have to be something that would be any cost for the town. I would imagine, especially if the Attorney General's Office says that we want to get involved, I would imagine that they would foot the bill or would hope that they would do that at least.
Yeah, Alex, so you were talking about a training session?
I mean, I, well, it's a forum. So the one that she was talking about was like a hate-free forum, so.
Okay.
I don't think that, I'm, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure how much um of actual training there is versus like I believe that it starts off kind of as the opportunity for folks across town to be able to show up to an event like this, and it's a place for everybody to get to air their concerns and share their thoughts about the things, and I'm sure that there are probably like other kinds of things, like maybe probably a lot like what you were talking about um earlier with those.
Because we're discussing a lot of that in these meetings, Alex.
Yeah, I think this is like more of the theoretical part rather than like, because I mean, the, although these moves are wonderful moves, they're still just kind of slapping a bandaid on the fact that like.
No bandage here, we gotta fix.
Well, but those are kind of, it's kind of a bandaid to just be like, let's just keep moving forward rather than like addressing the really serious racial stuff that's beneath us, which is why the school got closed down last Thursday. Like, there was no, there was there was no gun that the kids were stealing. There was a gun that was stolen, but it had nothing to do with these kids that as I was, I mean, I don't know if my point was just not really well understood last time, which you were not there, but other folks here were were there, and I just made um basically the case that there really wasn't actually any, a lot of what was being with allegations that were made, um were not like, say, for instance, like fights that happened. Well, we might think that it's just, you know, this kid beating the shit out of this kid, but actually, if we do a little bit of research, we can find one other kid was bullying this other one, so they were starting to find that, and I think a lot of that is kind of coming out, and a lot of it seems to be related to to race and to other, like, I mean, there's hazing harassment and bullying cases that's about, you know, civil rights violations, basically.
And that's coming out of the schools, too. See, the schools have a lot to do with that. And I do believe they have racial or hazing, they better have policies in place at the schools for racial and hazing, bullying.
Yeah, I mean, they had the mechanisms in place, had them in place for about two years, but they don't really get used very often, and it wasn't until someone helped me advocate for my own racial incident with one of my kids at elementary, yeah, full elementary school back in November, that I learned that you could use this tool, so I helped this family use this tool.
Yeah, they're there.
The school was not.
Their policies in place. And that's what we have also here, Declaration of Inclusion. We signed that through with the governor on December thirteenth, two thousand and one.
Alex, is there a resource person sometimes at high school that's involved dealing with issues or harassment or bullying issues?
I mean, I think that we have like, there's an equity committee that's like part of Pursuit, and I believe um Scott Hallman at the high school was on it, but we were talking um like last year about something unrelated, um and as far as I know, they're not actually really meeting about um things, so I don't, I don't know. I I don't believe that there's anybody around Poltony that's actually addressing any of these issues at the moment.
Well, that's something, I'll write this down, and I'll bring that up in our next meeting, because a lot of the school officials will be there. And I will find out about policies and stuff. Of course, if something like this happens in your minors, you know, they can't discuss it. If there's disciplinary action taken or if there's an investigation, that's that's stuff that is not really.
And I was not suggesting that we, you know.
No, I know. I'm just saying, well, yes, Alex, that's something I will check on myself.
I don't know specifically who the, I don't, it might be a a partner, a partner between the Rutland N W A C P and the Attorney General's Office. There might be another um body that's involved. I'm not sure. I don't really know that much about it, but I just wanted to bring it up because it's like I think we would do better to have both of these solutions working um to help us rather than just.
Well, we started talking hitting stuff like that at that meeting, and I'll find out about the policies and stuff in the schools, which ones are in there.
I just would thank the high school. I know even our elementary school, there's always someone, and there's those type of, any type of issue, if all and whatever, there's always someone that's certified, qualified, that does that investigation, not always the teacher.
Well, they have, the administrators are usually either like the principal or the guy that's concerned.
Yeah, I'll find out what's in there. I'll be addressing it to have myself.
A little different, yeah.
Hey, anything else from anybody?
Well, Paul mentioned that you do have another estimate for the dumpster railings.
Uh-huh.
Is it, did we look at it, or was it kind of higher in standard?
Um it's kind of high. It's materials that I don't think are appropriate. Um it's not stainless steel, it's not painted. So.
That's not gonna last very long.
Should we solicit another?
I think so.
Did you talk to him?
No, I did not.
Want me to talk to him?
If you'd like to.
All right, so just give me a copy of the estimate and make.
Good.
Because he has built a few things in May. He's not chief, but he is good. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Right, if there's no more on um public comments and concerns, then um do I hear a motion to sign the board orders?
Yes.
Motion to sign.
You second that?
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
Have you?
Motion carries. Now we have to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Pursuit into one, the S A, section three thirteen, A three, make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Right? Do I hear a?
Just second, I'm just second to that.
Okay.